Back into open session, as you all know, the way to get onto this meeting either by video or audio has been published in Notice of Meeting and that is at the town website. Just so we know who else is on, we're welcoming guest Nick Rizzo, who's going to make a presentation about a marijuana facility. Actually, maybe we need to just go around the room so Nick will know who's here. We definitely want the dog introduced too. So maybe we just quickly go around and say our name and our position in town so Nick will know who's visiting with him this evening. So Liz first.
Liz Dennehy, Town Administrator.
And I'm Mark Russo, Chair of the Board of Selectmen. Christine?
Christine Joy, Board of Selectmen.
John Trainor, Board of Selectmen.
Ken?
Ken Thompson's on.
Dave Alberti.
You're muted, Dave.
So Dave's muted, but Dave Alberti from the Zoning Board of Appeals, among many other positions, is on, as is his puppy. And then we have 585, is that Bree? Yeah.
That's Colleen, Town Treasurer, Collector.
I'm sorry, I should recognize that sooner or later, I will. And then we have 3206.
That's Rick Springer, Town Resident, former Board of Selectmen.
Hey, Rick, welcome. And then Bree's on board. All right.
Hello.
So, and Bree is the Board of Selectmen's Executive Assistant. So we welcome Nick Rizzo and he is going to put forth a cannabis business proposal. And so we welcome you, Nick, and we're looking forward to hearing from you.
Thank you, Mark, and thank you, everyone. It's nice to meet you all. Thanks for having me tonight. So my intent for tonight was really to just introduce myself and to ask you all for guidance on how to apply for a host community agreement to establish a cannabis business in Plinton. So if that sounds good to you, I'll just tell you a little bit about myself, a little bit about what I have in mind for the business. And then Liz sent over some specific questions around the type of facility, the location, the company information, et cetera, and I'll make sure to address that. Does that sound good to everyone? Okay. Great. So as I said, I'm Nick, I'm from Kingston originally, and I'm a veteran. I'm just actually getting out of the military in May. And I've been exploring getting into the sort of cannabis space for several years now. I just moved back to Ducksbury and my partner, my business partner, he has been in the cannabis industry for eight years, running a cultivation facility in Maine. And he's also from Kingston. We both grew up in the area and we connected, you know, maybe six months ago. And we imagined how we might replicate his success in Maine back closer to our own community. We feel like these businesses can be a really positive part of a community. I think I've seen with fellow service members and with my own family that when people have a healthy relationship with the plant, they can, it can be a really positive thing. And so John and I, my partner and I, we want to build a local, sustainable business that is energy conscious and is pretty small in scale in this industry. So that's sort of just a little bit about me and about my partner, John. More specifically, what I'm proposing is a cultivation facility to start. We want to grow cannabis in several greenhouses. And then you sell the cannabis to wholesale retailers, or excuse me, you sell it wholesale to processors and retailers elsewhere in the state of Massachusetts. So it's not a public facing business to start. So that's the idea. I've been in conversation with several people in the Wright District. I've reviewed the Plinton Town Bylaws and the zoning bylaws. I was able to speak with Ken, you know, maybe six weeks ago. And from what I understand, these businesses are allowed, once you receive a special permit from the planning board, in the industrial zone. So I've spoken to several property owners in the industrial zone. I don't have, I've got one that I really like, but I'm sort of waiting to understand what the process looks like here at the Board of Selectmen level before I really push forward with it. And, you know, I want to say that if, I have pursued this before, you know, maybe a year and a half ago, I had thought about getting involved in this in another town, in Kingston, actually. And it didn't work out because people weren't quite ready for it. And yeah, it fell through. And I want to just say upfront that if this is not something that you all really want in Plinton, then I completely respect that. I don't want to waste your time or mine. I'm really looking for a partnership with a town that would be supportive. And I think, you know, it could be really good for a town too. So I've said a lot, I'll stop there. And yeah, I hope I was able to answer all your questions.
All right. So Board of Selectmen first, and maybe I'll just start off. So at this point, you don't have a specific location within the industrial zone?
I have one in mind. I've been speaking to the landowner. He's willing to sell me the land, so I know where I want this to go. It's right on Spring Street, right off the highway. I just don't have it tied up with a purchase agreement because I, you know, wanted to check in with this group first.
And in terms of impact, in terms of noise or odor and things of that sort, that's, those are things you have thought about and begun to work through?
Yes, definitely. So noise should not be an issue. I mean, we won't really be operating heavy machinery necessarily, aside from the construction, of course. And I think I'm roughly familiar with Plinton's regulations around when construction can happen, and of course, I would take your guidance on that. And then the specific greenhouse that we want has sort of odor mitigation system built in to keep the area from smelling during harvest season.
So a couple more questions for me, and then I'll make room for my colleagues. You mentioned it fell through in Kingston. Were there particular issues there or particular resistance that came up?
Yeah, so the project I had pursued in Kingston was a retail focus rather than a cultivation focus. And so there was resistance in the town. I think people were rightly nervous about where these things would go. And, you know, I, my wife always tells me that rejection is the universe's protection. And so I feel very grateful that that fell through because it turns out what I want for, you know, I have a new daughter, she's 16 months, and I've been thinking a lot about what I want for her life and my life. And I'm really, I'm looking forward to starting a business that is more earth oriented. And so had I gotten into retail space, it just, that would not have been that. So this is a much different approach. And so it just didn't work out there because of zoning issues.
And last one for me, at least initially, your business partner's name is John?
John White, yeah. White is his last name, W-H-I-T-E. He's also from Kingston.
So first, I'll invite Christine and John if they have questions, and then any of the other participants.
How large is the greenhouse going to be?
So my target to start is 5,000 square feet. So it's a pretty small, it's a pretty small greenhouse. In the cultivation world, you can have a can of be anywhere from 0 to 100,000 square feet. But we are looking to make a local business, not a giant business. So we're going to start small and see how it plays out, maybe increase to somewhere around 10,000 square feet.
You're aware that Halifax is going forward with one?
Yeah, I think that's, several towns are, and I think there's some probably in Carver, there's some in Bridgewater.
Yeah. Now, there's some movement by some growers to do it on open land rather than having it in a greenhouse? Is that something you're considering, or is it strictly the greenhouse?
I think open growing is a great future for this industry. In Massachusetts right now, it's very difficult because the state, frankly speaking, treats the product as a manufactured, you know, sort of product rather than a biological product. The testing requirements are so stringent in Massachusetts that it becomes very hard to do outdoor, strictly outdoor grow. But my partner, John, grows most of his crop outdoor in Maine. It's, you get the full use of the soil, full use of the sun, it just makes more sense. I think Massachusetts is just not quite there yet.
Would you have enough acreage to do that sometime in the future, or are you going to be constrained?
No, I think we would consider, the parcel that I'm really interested in is about two acres. So that's, you know, 86,000 square feet or something. We're going to start with a couple of greenhouses, maybe one greenhouse, maybe two greenhouses, maybe an outbuilding for hanging the cannabis and drying. So I think we would definitely be open to it if the town would permit it in the future.
Is this a 24 by 7 operation, or?
You mean like, will people be there?
Yeah.
We will have people there on a daily basis, not 24 hours a day. I think if it does become a 24 hour a day thing, it would be for security purposes. It depends on what the state sort of asks you to do from a security perspective. But from an employee perspective, there's no need for employees to be there working the plants after hours.
Okay. Christine?
All right, Nick, a couple of questions. We had talked about this before, not with you, with another grower. And there was concern about the amount of water that was needed for these plants. Do you have a plan?
I do have a plan, and I'll admit to you that my partner, John, who could not make the meeting tonight, he is really the, he is the horticulturist in our operation. I'm more of the sort of operations person trying to learn from him. So John has thought through our water requirements and our plan for water. And if you'd like more details, I can certainly have him outline exactly what we expect to consume and how we expect to manage that. I think, so that being said, I just wanted to stand up as expert on, you know, water supply for cannabis plants. That being said, I think probably what would make the most sense would be drilling a well if that's okay with the town.
All right. And then would this be solar powered, or what are you, are you looking to do that for electricity?
Yeah, I'm glad you asked that. Our real approach to this industry is that we think that most people getting into the cultivation space are sinking a ton of money into unsustainable buildings. So they're doing indoor grows with lights that are on all the time. And we believe that the wholesale price of cannabis will decline over time nationally as we get closer to federal legalization and just as more states come online. Businesses who are, who have such high operating costs, they just won't be able to survive because the price, there will be downward price pressure. So from a business perspective, renewables, we would love to figure out a way to do solar. Of course, we can't put the panels as they exist now on the greenhouse, so perhaps on the outbuilding. But we, just even if you put aside the business approach, just from a moral perspective, we want to just do the right thing and we feel like this is just a better way to build a business. So we're definitely interested in that.
Okay. Obviously, you're going to have security. Would, how many employees do you envision having?
It's going to depend on the size of the greenhouse, of course. But if we start with the sort of base case that I'm working with, of 5,000 square feet, I think we will probably have to start somewhere around five full-time employees. And we'll probably target five harvests a year as the plants take, you know, several months to mature. And during those harvests, we'll probably employ people on an independent contractor basis to come in and help trim and prepare the cannabis. I'd love to, you know, I think we will try to expand, of course. As I said earlier, we could add additional greenhouse space. It could be that the market changes so much that it would make sense for me to come back to y'all and say, I want to, you know, transform this into a cultivation and processing facility, for example. And so that would change the number of employees for sure. But I would say those are the best starting numbers I can think of for now.
So right now, you're just talking about a greenhouse and you're just growing, strictly growing?
That's it, just growing, yep.
Is this for medical, or is it recreational, or is it going to be both?
I wanted to get into medical because I thought that, I thought that the regulations would be just cleaner for people trying to start businesses. And it turns out at the state level that to get into the medical space, you have to be completely vertically integrated. So you have to grow, process, and retail all at the same time. In addition to that, you have to pay $50,000 fee annually to the state of Massachusetts. So the medical industry in Massachusetts, unfortunately, is just impossible for someone like me who just is starting out. So right now, it's going to be adult use, so recreational, and just cultivation. If it works out, I would love to provide for the medical market because I think that probably everyone could agree that it just would be nice to supply, you know, an all-natural product to people that need it medically. But it's just too much to start fresh right now.
So I'm not sure how it works with the recreational, but with the medical, I believe you had to have an agreement with somebody who was going to be a storefront in order for you to get approved as a grower. So is that the same with recreational? Do you have to have an agreement with somebody to open up a recreational facility?
No.
That they're going to be doing the selling and processing?
No, no agreements other than the normal sort of sales agreements that will come as just part of being a business. So we will, as we come online and as we start to grow, we'll establish relationships with retailers throughout the state, and we will sell them wholesale cannabis on an agreed upon price. And that will sort of change as our yield and as our harvest and a change, just as a standard business selling any product to any sort of retailer would operate.
Okay. Now, one last, well, actually a couple of questions. But what about money? Are you going to have to keep cash on site in a safe, or will you be keeping all the money from this off-site?
Yeah, good question. We won't be keeping it on-site. Thankfully, there are two, at least two banks in Massachusetts who are now doing business with cannabis entities. One is called Bay Coast Bank, and one is called Gardner Credit Union. That one's in Western Mass. Bay Coast has several branches. So I've spoken to both of them. They're both, as you might expect, now that they've opened their arms to the cannabis industry, they're both very open to a depositor relationship with us and, you know, a loan relationship if we so desire. But I don't want to, I'm very certain that I want to minimize any risk for, or any, you know, anything that could lead people to believe that there's a reason to try and rob, you know, the facility. So we won't be storing cash there.
Okay. All right. Well, just for me personally, I'm not a big fan of marijuana. But, you know, I'm here with an open mind to listen, and I appreciate your proposal and your very frank answers to our questions. So I'm here with an open mind.
Thank you, Christine, and I appreciate you. I appreciate you being honest with me too. And I, if it's, I don't know if it's too personal, but I would, you know, maybe like to share a little bit about my family's experience with this and why I think it can be a positive thing. But I want to allow other people to ask questions first.
Sure.
And so we'll open it to others for questions. And by the way, I neglected administrative matter. This is being, meeting is being recorded as all of our meetings, and that is not to be construed as a public record. So we have several guests, Rick, Colleen, Ken, Dave. Do any of you have questions for Nick?
Yeah, it's Colleen. Nick, what is the profit that you're planning on providing to the town? What would the town's benefit financially be?
So I'm not prepared to discuss specific revenue numbers yet because so much is changing based on which type of greenhouse we build, what we can expect in terms of turnover, how much security ends up actually costing us. So I don't think it would be the best to tell you just now. I am certainly open to sharing those numbers in the future as I feel more confident in them. But I know in other towns, people have negotiated for 3% of gross annual sales, for example. Liz, I sent over, I think, this afternoon, a guidance document from the Cannabis Control Commission of the State of Massachusetts, where they've sort of outlined how people have approached these host community agreements in the past. So I'm, you know, certainly open to that. And like I said before, if there are more specific ways that you all have in mind that we could help out, you know, whether it's playgrounds, or like nonprofits, or fire department needs, or police needs, you know, I'm really open to all that. And I really mean it, that I want it to be, I want to be a positive member of the community in that regard. So I know that's probably not as specific as you wanted, Colleen, but I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, it's more reasonable than the last.
So Nick, I'll jump in with another question. Overall, for recognizing this is in the industrial zone, but not too far away, is agricultural residential zone, what impact on any nearby residential neighbors would you expect?
I would expect very, very little impact on neighbors. If I were proposing a retail shop, I think it would be a different, it'd be a different conversation. But this is a place where we should have five employees regularly commuting to the premise. We should have, if everything goes according to plan, five times a year, some movement of wholesale cannabis from the facility in a very secure way to several retailers. And we should have regular sort of deliveries of other materials that you might expect us to need. I don't expect there to be very much noise. I expect us to mitigate the odor. I don't expect there to be undue traffic or any sort of people hanging around the facility as it's just not open to the public. So I would expect that the impact to be very low, but if there are specific concerns, you know, I would, I would really be open to mitigating them, you know, if people have specific things they're concerned about.
Any other questions from people along the way? So I do have one more. Nick, you're aware that several years ago, another growth facility was proposed, a cranberry bog grower in the area, and we had pretty heated discussions along the way. And ultimately, that didn't work out for another reason, other reasons. But are you aware of that previous experience in the town?
I have read a little bit about it, I believe, Mark. Is that, is that where, I think a gentleman wanted to grow outdoors and wanted to use his, I think, own land and was claiming that he had a right to farm in that sense?
Yeah. Well, it was going to be, I think, greenhouses along the way. I, it was pretty controversial and it was a bit of a struggle. It was particularly a bit of a struggle for those that were, at least leaning in favor. I, I'm much more excited about this proposal. I think the other one maybe was at the wrong place and the wrong time. And I, at least personally, could imagine being excited about this. Of course, you'd have all the usual permitting to go through. As I understand it from a Board of Selectmen perspective, our main thing would be agreeing to enter a municipal agreement with you. Obviously, to, for us to decide that's something we would want to do, we have to get to the place of much more specifics along the way.
Of course.
I do salute you. You have so many hoops to jump through to make this happen. You seem young and energetic and...
I, you know, I have to, I'm, I feel excited by that, you know? I think it's, there's just a lot to figure out. There are, you know, tens or maybe even hundreds of small puzzles to figure out to make this happen. And I think if you think about it like that, it's kind of, it can be kind of exciting, you know?
I do have a question. The 3% is the state law, right?
No, the 3%, 3% is the maximum allowed by the state, according to the guidance, yeah.
Right. Can't go any higher.
Right.
And what's happened is that growers have elected to do charitable donations to try to incent the town to work with them.
Yeah, I think, I don't know, I just know what I hear a little bit from, you know, people that I've talked to in the industry, and I think that's, that's right. I think there's been some pushback on towns that are maybe asking for more than seems reasonable. So I think that's what prompted the Cannabis Control Commission to revise their guidance a little bit. But yeah, I think there's, there's been some, in the sort of like high-energy rush to make this a reality in Massachusetts of three years ago, I think that was definitely a part of it.
Do you have a timeline to make a decision?
Do you mean like, when will I decide whether I want to do this?
Well, I assume that if it's drawn out too long, you must be looking at other towns as a Plan B.
Certainly, yes. Yeah, I am looking at other towns. And I do, I do want to do this in Plinton ahead of any other town. I really mean that. But yes, I'm looking at at least two other towns where I'm seeing, you know, how this could work.
I'm just wondering, is there a timeline that you would expect a decision to be made by the town one way or the other?
I see. Good question. I don't have a specific date in mind, but I would just say, you know, in good faith as soon as possible. I know that y'all have a lot going on, so it's probably just, you know, one of many things to consider. But I would say, as soon as you know, you know, I would love to know if it's worth me continuing to pursue, particularly because everything in this industry depends on your right to access a piece of land that is properly zoned by a town. And so everything depends on entering into an agreement with a landowner. And, you know, I'm just pausing before I do that in any town, you know, at this stage right here, you know?
I think we owe you to come back with what we need to know in other, in order to go forward with the decision. We also expect you to come forward, but...
Right. Yeah, that would be excellent, John. I would love to know exactly what you all would need in order to, you know, formally consider my request for a host community agreement.
Okay.
Nick, I've got one last question for you, but first, thank you for your service.
Oh, thank you.
Very much. The, in the, like, an ideal scenario with, for lack of better terminology, like full buildout of the greenhouse, what do you envision that you're, that you would have in sales annually?
It's really, it's hard to say right now, but I would say at 5,000 square feet. And the reason, I'm not being coy about this, the reason it's hard to say is because the price of cannabis is expected to be pretty volatile. And I don't want to give you a number that, you know, then later we go forward this and we come in much lower and y'all are disappointed and think that I just made stuff up. So I'll just say that in Massachusetts right now, the price per pound of cannabis ranges from 3,800 to 4,200 for high-quality indoor-grown cannabis. Our hypothesis is that we can grow as high quality as indoor in a greenhouse. So let's, if we take that price point and assume that we can, on a 5,000-square-foot facility, produce on average 0.4 pounds per square foot per year on, per square foot per year, around 2,000 pounds for the year. So at 2,000 pounds, at a price point of 3,800 to 4,200 per pound, the revenue is substantial. That is just the top-line revenue, that doesn't take into account all of our expenses, of course. And I should say, before anybody gets excited about those numbers, the national average of the price per pound for cannabis is $1,500. So there are so many changes coming down with the new administration, there's potential descheduling, there's potential federal legalization, there are more states coming online, there are more cultivators in Massachusetts coming online. All these things will reduce the price. So I have been building my models based on something, something lower, a little bit safer, not 1,500 per pound, but something closer to 2,500 to 2,800 per pound. So I just, in the interest of transparency, those are all the numbers, those are all the levers I'm playing with. You can, of course, you know, figure out what that might mean for the town. But there's just so much that is unknown in this industry right now that I just, I would hate to say a number and then have it, you know, be off of that and, you know, upset anybody.
No, I appreciate that. I just had no idea what we were even talking about. So I appreciate, even a ballpark is great. Thank you very much.
Sure thing. Yep. Oh, and thank you for, thank you for thanking me for my, for my service.
Thank you.
Mark, Ken? I had the opportunity to talk to Nick at length and was impressed with his breadth and depth of knowledge of business and town activity. And so I find his thought process to be quite thorough. On the question that was raised about the neighborhood action... On the question that was raised about the neighborhood action, the, I happen to know the property that he's looking at, the two acres, and it's actually between two other delivery companies that we all know about and that his quint, my annual, whatever that is, five times, falls really small in the neighborhood of both Cisco on one side and Hubble on the, well, actually, no. Lawrence Ready Mix shares the same driveway. So I don't think traffic, I don't think even a little bit of noise, not that I heard about it, but it's between two or three other industrial, you know, large players, larger players in town. So I think the question on community is well-covered by the proximity for the only lot left in town on Joe Freitas Way.
Thanks, Ken. So I guess, bottom line, I, Nick, I really appreciate your presentation and what you have to say. And I don't hear anything that dissuaded me so far. Obviously, we need to spend some time thinking about this. And it is that challenge of the chicken and the egg and us needing more details along the way, you certainly wanting some assurance from us. But I think we can continue to discuss this and maybe get to the place of understanding whether we have interest in pursuing further. I hope we do. But let's work on that and be in touch with you soon on what else we might like to know.
Okay, I think that sounds great. And I totally understand that this whole, this whole industry is one big chicken-and-egg puzzle in every direction. So I completely understand. And just, you know, I don't know. Feel free to email me or call me as you come up with any specifics that you might need, you know, more specific presentation. Or Christine, I'll certainly have John join next time and we can talk about water, you know, or sing. Or whatever the case may be. So I'm open to that. I really appreciate you having me tonight. I appreciate you being open to this. And, you know, I'm, I know I've taken up a lot of your time. I just want to say two more things. The first is that I'm, I'm new to business. So, you know, like, we're just local guys who, like, think we can build something. We're not a conglomerate. We have, like, no lawyers, you know? If that tells you anything about, you know, like, the size and scope of our operation. So I just, I think this is, I think this could be really important for everyone involved. And we, we keep the transparency high. I can tell you that. And that was the first thing I wanted to say. The second thing I wanted to say, Christine, is that I just wanted to offer a short story about how I ended up in this space, based on my family experience, because I really understand your apprehension around the industry overall. And that's, I'll keep this brief because it's, it is a long story, but I'll, I'll keep it brief. And that's, almost 20 years ago, my, I'm from Kingston, as I said. My brother was killed and he, it's sort of, you know, as you can imagine, it was, it was hard times for my family for a long time. It still is in many ways. And my mother, she tried a lot of things to learn to live with her new reality. And I'm not going to tell you that cannabis, like, fixed her problems. But I will just say that when it came to nightmares and things that pharmaceuticals couldn't seem to fix, we saw some glimmers of hope in cannabis. And it just put, it turned a light bulb on in my head where I thought, okay, what will all of this look like in 20 years when perhaps people are able to have, be more open about how it might help? And especially in a more controlled setting where people can say, I only actually take 2.5 milligrams of this at a time. So that's what sort of started me on that. And I, you know, I just, I just wanted to add that as we close out and hope you don't mind me sharing that.
Very much appreciated.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Mark, if we may, Vicky has a comment, if we have time for it.
I would just like to say, as residents of Plimpton and a user of medical cannabis, that I would welcome a grow in Plimpton. I think it would be really good for the town. And I just want the Board of Selectmen to, to understand that I think a majority of the town would probably feel the same way. And the fact that he is a small grow, not a big conglomerate, would be a positive thing.
Thank you for saying that.
I had just a quick comment, maybe for reinforcement of what Vicky said. I'm not a rec user, but I, I betically, I've used it specifically on both needs. And my daughter would be proud that she recommended this stuff. And it's like a savve. And I'm telling you, in the last week and a half, what a big difference since October. Well, you know, that's success story. And, you know, we're all for something like this. And I don't know, maybe Nick knows my daughter, Holly Alberti. She's, she's been in the business for 10 years now. I'm back and forth to the West Coast and back here. And she's with Berkshire Roots now.
Okay.
In Massachusetts. And done very well. And she lives in Plymouth. So we'll do what we can. And if there's any, anything we can do with the board or all the boards, as I'm on the Tony Board of Appeals and the Law Review Committee too, Vicky's with open space. And we're going to remain open. You know, that's about all we can do. So we hope to hear from you again.
Thank you, Dave and Vicky, for saying that. And I don't know, I don't know your daughter, but I, you know, we are going to be looking for good people in case she's, I don't want to get our lines crossed here, but you know...
That's a good one, because her husband's a lot of work.
I don't know what's... Okay, okay. Yeah, I don't know. I guess I'll leave it at that, but that would be great, you know?
Nick, we'll be in touch equally. You feel free to be in touch with us as well.
Okay. All right. Thanks, everyone. I really appreciate your time.
Thank you, Nick. Thanks for coming in.
I love that entrepreneurial spirit. Okay, next agenda item, or any last words on that? So next agenda item is the treasurer-collector about the status of tax takings.
Okay. I sent everybody a list with maps showing the latest tax takings or the only tax takings that we have that have not become town-owned from 2019. I haven't started until 2020 and don't know as if I will. But the parcels that we have, there are eight of them, and there's only one that's actually of any value, and that's Demming. And that's the one that abuts Harry Jason Park. He has, he has asked us if we wanted to buy it, but, and I had expressed his willingness to buy it, but as of now, it's in tax title. Six months from now, all of these takings can go to auction. I mean, go to, first they have to go to foreclosure, then they can go to auction after that. But I can't put them in the process for six months. They have six months to come forward and pay. One of these eight has made a partial payment, and I sent her a letter today with the balance. And that was Satchel. That's Prospect Road, and that's a land of low value. And as you can tell by most of the maps, that there, you can't get into these properties. And the most value that they'd be would be to the abudders, except for that one that I, of Demming's. Rick is on the line, and he's waiting for one of our town-owned parcels on Churchill Road to go to auction. And I put that in my notes. I believe he owns the abutting lot, and the two would make, make him able to build a home on that lot. Doherty is in tax title. I have an agreement with him. And as I said, in that note, that attorney Coppola is dealing with him. Other than that, there's one parcel that, when I became treasurer, it was a hot potato because it was contaminated. And I'm just, I just put that forward. You don't want to foreclose on that. And there are letters in the file as to the contamination.
Colleen, my understanding on the one that's, that's the one on Main Street that's contaminated, that was the old Charlie Brackett land, that...
That's before my time.
Huh?
That's before my time. I have, I have picked the Terry care in sideline.
Okay. And in any case, there was a question of whether that, what's there would still be considered contamination? I don't know if anybody's looked into that. It'd be nice to have a hand.
Nobody has done anything with it since I've been there, John. And I think it would be, you know, if it did become town-owned, it's ready to be, you know, it's ready to foreclose on. But it would be quite expensive, I believe, to even have...
I'm not advocating we fork, that we take it over. I don't think the town should.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I think, I think there's a question that the, the abudders might want to look at it. But in any case, okay.
You'd have to foreclose on it in order to do it.
Yeah. Well, we'll talk offline. I, you know, maybe it just sits for another 50 years.
Can I ask about the Churchill Road piece, 18-4-12, that the town owns?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay, can we, we decide what's going to happen to that parcel? It is land of low value, with a wetland on it, and it does not need zoning. It's not abutted to any other town-owned parcel. It's, right now, it's assessed for $5,000. The abutting parcel is the same size, which I have under agreement, and I have perked the abutting parcel, that's 18-4-11. However, these parcels, when Dave Barrows decided to build the subdivision and build Churchill Road back in the '70s, he cut up these lots and he made them undersized. And he sold off a bunch of them together, who then, so then zoning came in, which established 150 feet of permit and 40,000 square feet. Well, these lots didn't meet that. So unless they were owned individually, they should have merged. That's why these lots are unbuildable today, because they're not grandpa. So the town-owned parcel is really useless to anybody except the abutting parcel, which that guy is assessed for $106,000. That parcel, his parents actually had a building permit on in the early '70s. Never built on it, but there is a building permit. So it's considered a buildable lot, but yet it's not because legally it did not, it should have merged with the abutting lots, and it didn't. So I'm here to solve your problem. Get rid of that lot, we'll get it out to auction and hopefully put it together with the abutting lot, and then all the parties will be satisfied. Does that sound like a good plan?
Colleen, is this one that we have to wait six months for?
No, we already, we already own this, Christine. It's already town-owned. This was actually foreclosed on in the last, last time around.
So all the parcels in this, this email that you sent us are all currently owned by the town and can all...
No, the eight, no, the first eight are not.
Okay.
It says land of low value, that we'd have to do land of low value...
Oh, I see, gotcha.
Foreclosure through the DOR. Bricknell, Colton, Justice Pillsbury, Demming, Schatzel, who's the one who started making payments, Templeton.
Gotcha.
And then Rick is waiting for the town-owned parcel on Churchill Road to go to auction. He owns the abutting lot and needs ours in order to build a home.
Okay. So that's all we need to do, is just send it to auction?
No, well, it has to go to, yeah, it would have to go to, it would be included in the next auction.
Which is when?
Rick, I'm retiring, so I don't know.
So wouldn't the next auction be when and if we decided to sell town land?
Well, if you, well, normally, well, it depends what you're going to sell. Normally, you don't hold an auction for one parcel. I hold the, I would hold the auctions once I got the rest of everything else that's in tax-taking to foreclosure.
So you're saying you'd wait six months till the others closed?
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't do an auction on one piece of land. One thing I was, I, you could consider is doing an article at town meeting, getting town vote to approve the sale of the lot to Rick without going to, without him having to wait for auction. That's how I'd do that lot.
At what price?
If you decided what, I'd have to have an appraisal done.
Well, we, we have the assessed value of $5,000.
Yeah, we're not going by the assessed value.
But it's not, it's non-buildable. You can't build one.
It's still worth more than $5,000.
Really?
Okay.
I'd have, I'd have it appraised and get an appraiser's opinion.
Okay.
And then you could do, you could go to, he may say it's worth $5,000. I don't know. But...
There's two, there's two other parcels, one on Churchill Road, one on Upland Road, in the same situation. But I, I believe they're paying their taxes. But they're undersized, they're part of the same subdivision, and they're also assessed at $5,000. That's parcel 18-4-10 on Churchill and 18-4-7 on Upland. It's all part of the same development. So what's the status on those, Colleen?
As long as the taxes, it, those lots have not come to my attention because the taxes are not outstanding.
Okay. But they're assessed at $5,000, so they're only paying a tax. Well, I don't know what it is. Very small amount of tax.
But Rick, my house is assessed for a lot less than what I'd sell it for.
Okay.
And I'm sure yours is too.
Does the board have some input into how much it can take for...
My answer would be that we ought to have it appraised if it's going to go forward in an article. I mean, if you put it forward in an article that says one specific person is going to be the purchaser, then I think it's owed to the town to have it appraised.
I actually, I'm, I, it may be the case that that's still a vehicle, but I was left with the understanding that that isn't a vehicle, that town-owned land would have to go to auction, that it couldn't be directed even by town meeting to a single individual. I may have that wrong.
I think, no, I think you're right, Mark. I think, we sold the old fire station. That went to a town auction, a public, a blind auction, actually. Everybody submitted bids that was interested. Obviously, there was only one person interested in the parcel that had the old firehouse on it. So we had, I think, Christine, were you on the board when we sold that?
I was.
Yeah. And do you remember how that went down? It was you, me, and Joe, wasn't it?
Yes. Good times.
Yeah. Anyway, we, we, we put it out, we advertised it, according to town council's recommendation, it was advertised. And then, then we took bids in. And when we took those bids in, we awarded it to the highest legitimate bidder. They had to put up a deposit and then pay the balance within 30 days.
Maybe it's only, maybe, let me correct it. Maybe it's only if someone wants to give us land that you can do it. I'd have to check with Jim Coppola.
I think you're right on that, Colleen, that if it's, they want to donate it.
If they want to donate it, maybe that power can be done at town meeting. Maybe that's, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
I think you have to offer it to the public by state statute. I don't think the town...
Yeah, it's Mass General Law, it's Chapter 30B, Section 16, I believe, that deals with the disposition of town-owned land. It does require an appraisal of some sort. But there is a clause in there, if it's, if it's valued at $35,000 or more, that dictates kind of a more stringent process.
that dictates kind of a more stringent process, um, structured process to the disposition of that land. I believe if it's valued under $35,000, there are a few more options at play. Um, similar to the line of the discussion, um, I don't believe that you can just direct it to one particular entity to make it available to the public.
Okay. Yeah, I'm probably thinking of the, if, um, somebody wanted to donate it, you could do it that way.
Yeah. No, I, no, I think you're right. I think it has to be offered and you would have to have a deadline when you'll accept bids by. Bids have to be in by X date. When those bids are in, the Board of Selectmen will open those bids and they will determine the highest qualified bidder and that person will get a deed for that lot within 30 days.
Right. But this, this isn't our only, uh, town owned, um, parcel that would be available to send to auction. Don't we have a list of properties?
Yeah, we have several. You'd have to go over.
So maybe we need to review the list and, um, see if there's any other parcels.
Anything you wanted to get rid of.
Right. And, and do an auction and, you know, maybe we could do something in the next six months, maybe something in the, the summer.
So, and I think that's something that we had in the past talked about, that yearly we would just review all of the town owned land and see if we wanted to make any, any changes. And I think we, or if we wanted to offer any. And, um, so it would be reasonable to get that on our to do list.
Right.
I'd like to see us though, Liz and Colleen, to just go through the statute and make sure we understand what the, the process is.
Um, yeah.
This is all new to me.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I have some notes from Jim Coppola. Um, I think I, I, I know there's a process where you can do something at town meeting and I, it, the more I think about it, I think it's if somebody wants to sell us the land and then it's approved to accept it. Um, I do, I do think that an auction can be held. Um, I don't know about the bidding. I've never, I haven't personally done anything with bids other than dealing with the town owned property, um, that we just did on Prospect. Um, because the town's usually not in the business of selling lots. So that's why I think it would have to be done by auction.
But that's what
But I can check, I can check with Jim Coppola just by an email and verify it, um, John.
All right, all right.
Well, I, I know Rick, Rick wants some clarity and certainly what we can do is just
Well, he's been waiting quite a while.
Well, we can confirm the process. Um, and we can get on our to do list, uh, maybe our yearly review of town owned land, um, which actually, John, might, might, um, segue into, uh, the Town Properties Committee as well.
Sure.
So, uh,
I think all, all, all these land lots should go through town properties just to make sure.
Right. That there's no interest, right?
Yeah, that takes an hour.
Yeah. Can I take my builder hat off for a minute and talk as a taxpayer and town resident for my whole life? I, I just don't see the purpose of owning parcels of land that are low value when some of these parcels can be, you know, sold to abutters and increase the value and increase the tax base, um, over something that's non producing, non fun, you know, it's not, it's not doing any benefit to the town. So that's, that's my pitch on that. I, I don't see, I don't see why I would want to keep them, to be honest.
Some people don't want them, Rick. The last auction I had, I may have auctioned off six or seven parcels and only two abutters were interested.
That's true. That, you know, that could very well be true, but
And that's what I, and that's what I, I mean, if you look at some of these maps, people are using the land anyway.
Yeah, well, yeah, this, I don't think this parcel's being used, but that's, you know.
Oh, yeah. I'm not talking about Churchill. I'm talking about a couple of the others. One's a little diamond on somebody's property and, and they're not even, there's nothing you can do with it, so they're not going to buy it.
Right, right. No, I understand what you're saying. Might as well, might as well just let it sit there.
Yeah. And, and that's the result of some of the town owned, uh, land of low value parcels.
Right.
So we'll do some research and we will keep this on the radar screen and see how we want to move ahead.
Yeah, we owe an answer within the next, you know, month or two.
Yeah, if, if there's going to be an auction held because, you know, I would like to be informed when that was going to happen. So I could obviously put in a bid that would be, uh, you know, reviewed by the, the Board of Selectmen and decision being made whether you want to sell it or not.
Okay.
Okay. Um, within the framework of upcoming town meeting and budget process and our, the billion other things, we will stay on it. All right.
Okay.
Thanks, Rick.
Appreciate your time.
I'll keep you posted, Rick.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Christine also.
Yeah, no problem, Rick. I'll keep you posted of our progress.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate your time.
So next, next agenda item is, um, uh, some appointments and the reappointment process. So, um, let's just dive into the appointments first. Judy Dudley, um, needs to be reappointed to the Community Preservation Committee. Her term would be from now until, um, June 30th of, uh, 2023. She's been a loyal and active member in the Community Preservation Committee. I'll make a motion, we, um, we appoint her.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor, roll call, Ms. Joy.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Trainer.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Russo, yes. Um, next is, um, uh, Dave Bugby to wage and personnel. Bree, um, were you able to sort out what the term would be on that one?
Yes. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Yep.
So Dave Bugby is, that's going to be for 6:30, 2023.
Okay. Um, so I'll make a motion, Dave be appointed and, uh, do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, and roll call, Mr. Trainer.
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Russo, yes. Uh, and then we have, uh, Art Moron, Moran for Coordinator of Races, which is Radio Amateur Civil Emergency Services. And that appointment would be to June 30th of, uh, 2023. Arthur Moran, um, Coordinator, Ra- Radio Amateur Civil Emergency Services.
I'll second that motion.
Uh, a roll call vote, Mr. Trainer.
Yes.
Um, Mrs. Joy.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Russo, yes. And then the last one, Bree, you have to help me on this. This is, uh, Gabe Lundgren, um, and he would
For the Board of Registars, and we already did vote for him.
We did, yeah.
But we did it until June 30th. And his runs like the animal control officer because it's state regulation. So I need to kind of bump him. Let's go back and do it till March 31st of 2021. And then he'll go again from 4-1, um, 2021 until
3:31 of 24.
So 2024.
Yep.
Yeah.
So that's the motion.
We have done him until the 24th, I mean, 2024, but it's a break up date. I need to do this small period because like I said, he'll run like the animal control officer.
Okay. So Gabe Lundgren to Board of Registars, uh, the first appointment through, now through March 31st of 2021, and then an appointment from 4-121 through 3:3124. So that's my motion.
I'll second the motion.
Very good. Roll call, Mr. Trainer.
Yes.
Mrs. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Russo.
Thank you for that.
All right. So we are through that. And then we have a bit more of a general discussion of changing the, a little bit the way we do the reappointment process. Um, and, uh, Liz, are you the one that would introduce that, that change?
Sure. So in speaking a bit with Brigitte and also checking around with some other towns and how their reappointment process looks each year, um, it seems that more and more places are moving away from the individual appointment slips. Um, it just takes up so much of the administrative assistance time. And what they're doing is for the annual reappointments, like July 1st to June 30th, they're actually, um, creating almost like a spreadsheet that has everyone's names, the, you know, position title, the term of the appointment or appointments. And then what they'll do is after selectmen vote on that list at a meeting in late June, uh, they'll send the entire list along with the cover sheet that basically is addressed to the town clerk and says that a duly called and posted meeting held by the board on X date, it was voted to, you know, appoint or reappoint all of the individuals noted on the attached list for the terms noted therein and, um, kind of getting away from all those individual little slips of paper. Um, that said, they still do use the small, um, individual appointment slips for appointments that might come up sporadically throughout the year. Um, but for the large scale effort for the July 1st to June 30th, um, a lot of towns are finding that it's much easier and better use of the administrative assistance time to simply have the board vote on the list and forward said list to the town clerk rather than typing up all those individual slips.
I am enthusiastically in favor of this, uh, upgrade.
Me too. It's so much work. It's so tedious. Much more difficult than it needs to be.
Right.
I am working with Nancy, um, before Tara had left, I, um, of a program that they were using. And now Nancy, um, an eye on the same page and updating it. And if anything's changing it, I can see it. So once I, report is one and I can give that to her, she can then, I, I will always send out to boards and committees, the, um, annual email, please see the clerk's office to be sworn in. And then as they get sworn in, Nancy can update that list and I can see it. But I can get the master list out, we sign it at our meeting, and then I just give it right back to them. And they can put it in as the people come in to be sworn in. So I think it's an easier process.
Very good. Um, so should we take a vote on this? Just to confirm it? Uh, yeah. All right. So I make a motion that we adopt this, uh, new method of dealing with appointments.
I'll second.
Uh, John, you have a comment?
I hope we're not going to write it up that way. I assume, Liz, you're going to write this up so we know what we just voted. Okay.
Okay. Uh, roll call vote, Mr. Trainer.
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Russo, yes. All right. Um, well, so we are up to draft articles and, um, uh, Board of Selectmen priorities list. We are two hours into this already and, um, I think maybe we want to abbreviate some of that, the priorities list. That's not the parking lot.
You know, it's kind of a combination of both. I mean, it's, I, we almost need to, would it make sense to have a Monday meeting next week and just only draft articles?
Why don't we, what if we do this? I'm starting to get some articles in, but I don't have very many.
Yep.
Why don't you give me a little time to get our draft warrants, kind of some semblance of that put together? Um, and then get that out and we could move forward from there.
Can that wait two weeks?
Changing, like even, for instance, one of the articles that we had talked about, um, at first we were seeing if it could be funded through Chapter 90 money. Now it seems like there's an opportunity for Old Colony Planning Council to assist us with those efforts. So things are kind of changing rapidly. Um, I think we benefit from having another couple of weeks before we really need to get into this and finalize things. It would also give the Town Properties Committee a chance to find their footing. Um, it's not a huge rush. I more or less just put this together to kind of put it on your radar, some of the stuff that's on, but I think we'll know more in a couple of weeks.
I agree. I, I feel uncomfortable voting for those now.
Uh, why don't we hold back?
Perfect.
Let's, let's aim for a couple of weeks. Let's put it at kind of the top of the bullet list because it'll, it'll be important by then. Um, just a very small side note, I did check with Community Preservation Coalition and the part of the roof of the townhouse that's on the historic part in front could be paid for with, um, CPA funds. So, um, that might create more complication than we need and, um, or delay, but I'd just throw that out there. That might change how we write that article on roof assessment. Um, beautiful. So if we, um, bump that down the road a little, that, that's helpful. So we are up to the town administrators update.
Um, so I'm working, I was going to put together, um, a short application to Old Colony Planning Council for local technical assistance, uh, relative technology and establishing some best practices. I think it would be another step in the right direction for us as far as technology and establishing a roadmap of sorts. Um, I might word it open enough that when our new town accountant comes on board, maybe they could get involved in the process as far as identifying even software packages or something like that, um, if we want to get more specific. But I thought that would be, um, something kind of helpful that we could apply for and that is something we could use now. Um, so if the board feels good about that, um, I'm going to proceed and get the application in, um, in the next day or so. We also have a workshop coming up on March 10th for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Project that we're working on. Um, for that project, I'm going to have Area 58. I'm waiting for them to get back to me with some information about a Zoom link and everything else. And that way it can be broadcast right to TV and people can watch the workshop and learn about what we're trying to put into the plan, um, if they're not available for that, you know, to participate in the live Zoom session. Um, so we're working on that. Um, still trying to come through some of our, um, building issues. Um, Brigitte's been doing a good job as far as taking the lead on investigating some of the townhouse plumbing issues. And, um, we've encountered a few obstacles, but we'll have more to report on that. Um, we have some people coming out to the townhouse tomorrow to take a look at some things and we should have more information about the undertaking that would be involved with fixing the plumbing issue, um, at some point after tomorrow. Um, that's still ongoing. Um, also I received a few sentences from the Highway Department about a chipping policy. That was something that had been on the board's to do list for a while. Um, I definitely need to beef it up a little bit and add some language and then I'll circulate that to the board for review. But I think we're going to be coming into that time of year where residents start calling saying, oh, you know, we have some down limbs from winter storms or whatever, you know, how does this apply to me? Um, so we're kind of coming up with a, sort of a uniform policy on that. Um, we're also, I wanted to let Christine Kelly, um, get through the dental insurance thing first, and then we're going to send something out to everybody to have them sign in receipt of the social media policy. So we're working on that. And, um, otherwise, as far as COVID goes, our numbers are coming down a bit. Everybody's kind of anticipating a small Um, everybody's kind of anticipating a smaller surge within the next week or so to account for February vacation. Um, but it seems like the numbers are coming down, although the vaccines and the rollout of them continues to be problematic as people not being able to get appointments and that sort of thing. That concludes my update.
Thanks, Liz. Uh, let's see, correspondence?
I don't have anything specific.
Okay, so, um, we're up to minutes and we have the minutes of February eighth. Um, uh, any, uh, suggested edits on that?
I, I think Christine's, uh, amendments are just perfect.
Okay, I had a couple of very minor things, um, on page two, uh, 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 the second paragraph about Area Fifty-Eight, I think, um, the word, um, streamed ended up with an extra B in it, so that needs to get fixed. Um, and then down on Highway Department, um, Office Building, um, uh, that first sentence says, "Highway Department Building recently had a water emergency during a storm causing minimal damage." I would delete the word minimal. I, I think we don't fully know yet, uh, how much the damage is nor, um, what's gonna be involved in insurance claims, so, um, simply, um, noting that there has been damage, I think. Uh, and those are the changes that I had. Anything else for those minutes?
Nope.
So I make a motion, these minutes of, uh, February eighth be accepted as, as amended, uh, and we need a second.
I'll second.
And roll call, Mr. Trainer.
Yes.
Mrs. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Russo, yes. All right, I think, um, so last two items were coming to raves. Um, I think maybe, Bree, did we have Paze, um, scheduled to come in for the next meeting? Was that, um, is that still on, on the books?
Yes. People will be joining us.
What's that?
Say again.
Good to hear you, Bree.
Uh, can Amy?
I think she said yes.
Okay.
Or Paze.
All right.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
People will be joining us.
Okay.
Have, have they been notified?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, uh, so we're up to raves, or rants for that matter.
All right, I'll go first. Um, my rave is, um, would be Nick Rizzo and him coming in with his presentation and as he was speaking, and I saw his name, I'm thinking when he, when he said Kingston, um, that I may, you know, the family and then, um, when he told his story at the end, I definitely know who, what he's talking about. And, um, and all I, I'm glad that his mother was able to find some peace because that is, was just a horrible, horrible thing and I wouldn't wish that on my worst enemy. So I'm glad that she was able to find peace and that he shared that story with us, so I appreciate that.
And I, I, my, my rave actually is the exact same thing. I, um, only peripherally have known Nick or the family and however we decide or think maybe good or less good about a marijuana grow facility, I just, I salute the youthful, energetic, forward-looking, well-spoken, just kind of a refreshing approach, uh, particularly that sense of doing things right. So I, that was just a treat and a pleasure, so, um, thank you, Nick. Uh, sometimes those of us in government need that breath of fresh air and it was a pleasure. Okay.
So I've got a rave, um, has nothing to do with us. But, uh, I got my vaccine shot and I went to the Marshfield Fairgrounds and it is the most professional way of doing it. Um, they just have it well-mapped out and I'm very supportive and if anybody's thinking of getting a shot and they can get to Marshfield, that's the place to go.
Good to know.
And they do it while you're in the car, which is nice.
That is nice.
Yeah.
All right, any last words?
Um, Dr. Russo, i- if I may, this is Ken.
You may, Ken.
Um, as, as the, uh, as Liz was going, running down the upcoming, uh, events, um, I wanted to add the, uh, work that Alan Wheelock has done in creating a general code, e-code webinar for all people who want to navigate the brand-new web code on the website. And it's, uh, Thursday at four-thirty webinar and I think it's open to one and all.
It is.
Um, so if there wasn't any, anybody who wasn't aware of that one, um, I didn't hear it come up, so.
No, you, you, thank you for bringing it up, Ken. I spent some time the other afternoon just going through it. It is, it is great. I mean, anybody who comes into our town says, "I want to know something about the zoning laws," it's there. You can search it, you can get to anything you need.
Uh, thank you. Um, so I just had that short one and I have a, um, and I don't know what the protocol is, but we've got like four weeks to get, um, um, warrants in and I had thought that there were some things being done for the warrant for this year. They were plugging holes from the current bylaw and, um, as Mark and Liz know, we've had two conversations about areas that need bylaw work for this year, even though we've only got weeks and not months, months to go. Um, and the point I'm getting to, and John, you were part of this, I think, at the Bylaw Committee, which I used to be on, um, when the assignment, as Mark and Liz and I talked about, for, um, clarifying Robyn Stein, Town Council's remarks in her letter, which I think everyone has seen, which says, "It's not in there, it seemingly never was and you shouldn't be giving any bylaws going forward." And every day or every week I get applicants for an in-law and I'm going, "We don't do this," and they go, "Well, show me and we can't because there's nothing there." So I thought that the fix for this year was what Dave Alberti called a stop-gap measure.
Uh, excuse me, I'm really, I'm sorry to interrupt you. We don't have this on our agenda.
Okay.
Uh, you know, the answer though, Ken, is the Bylaw Committee is bringing something forward.
Which is hugely problematic and I'll talk to Liz tomorrow.
Okay, great.
Okay, I mean, we can certainly get this on the agenda for next meeting. It's a big issue, a complex issue, needs attention, um, um, but certainly we'd want to offer the public the chance to know we're talking about it, so.
That's my only point. Thank you, Mark.
Yeah, okay, great. Uh, all right, we did raves, we did everything else and we'll be back in two weeks, if not sooner. Thank you so much, everyone. A good productive meeting. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.